Hello and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. This is Tuesday, May 1st, 2018, and we're at the Veterans Memorial Building, 209 Surf Street. We have all members are present, so I'll call the meeting to order. Could we please have a moment of silence? Please stand, face the flag, and begin the Fledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance...
...to the United States of America, into the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. If it's okay with the other commissioners, I'd like to shift the agenda around a little bit, so we can get right into our agendized meeting, B1 and B2. But first, I'd like to ask if there's anybody in the public that would like to speak on a general public comment, not on the agendized meeting? Okay, then please come forward. We'll do the public comment first.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Graham, Ms. Hubbard, my name is Carol Truesdale. I've been here since 1995. There is going to be coming before you the 3300 Panorama tank removal position, somewhere probably the May-June timeframe. And on March 29th, I sent a message off to Ms. Hubbard here regarding the negative mitigated declaration. It's 5-1. I've not yet heard responses to my numerous questions as it pertains to the MND. The Morro Bay stakeholders have never been against the removal of these tanks. We've always postured that their removal meet and exceed the criteria of SEQA and the City of Morro Bay ordinances. This applicant has already defiled ordinances by entering the ESHA during nesting season, and we'd like to know how the city has handled these violations, as Commissioner Teft, God rest his soul, had asked. And another thing, I cannot stay for B2. I would like to speak on that at this time. Do I have your permission? I have a conflict I'm running late to. And it's very simple...
Yeah, I was moving the items forward so that we would avoid this situation. Do you have written comments?
Basically, it's quick and simple, and it'll only take me a second to read. May I have your permission?
You know, I'm trying not to allow this, you know, because it gives favoritism for certain people, and I don't think that's fair. But go ahead and give 30 seconds.
All right, sir. This is the second conceptual plan the city staff has brought before the Planning Commission asking for an exception to residential height limits in North Morro Bay. It's no secret that the new proposal zoning ordinance wants to change residential heights from 25 feet to 30, just as it proposes downtown Morro Bay be allowed to go 44. We have a serious parking situation in Morro Bay currently. Our favorite apartment building is an R4 zones, however, these apartments, as opposed averaging 1,200 square feet, not providing the required number of off-street parking space and violating the height limit, do not conform to our town ordinances or addresses in need. It appears to be creeping, as Commissioner Teft had said.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For general public comment?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening or good afternoon, Bill Martini. Two weeks ago, I spoke on, this was on the working waterfront, and as far as mixed area B, this is the area south of the boat launch. And I heard at that time with the LCP update that everything was going to, pretty much, you know, was going to stay the same. When I read afterwards at G-PAC, I noticed that there were some changes, so I'm a little confused. If Area B, if it's going to still be designated Area B, because in Area B, and this is on Main Street, south of the boat launch, it states that it's mixed harbor use for recreational boating and fishing, and commercial fishing, and that is supposed to be at the northern end. And yet, in the update, it says that everything is allowed in that area. This is in the harbor zone. And so, I'm not sure whether it's going to stay as is with the mixed harbor use that's currently designated in that area of the harbor, or whether you in turn are going to allow the entire bay to be for, you know, commercial, industrial, and, you know, as far as, as opposed to how it's currently designated. The other thing I wanted to mention is, in the update, there's a zoning map that I feel needs to be corrected, and I know it's tough to see from here, but the current zoning map, and I could display it, but I'll just, shows the waterfront zoning to actually, the land zoning to include a portion of the water itself. It has the lease site showing in the land side, and it shows two-thirds of that area is waterfront commercial, and one-third as far as residential, where the original zoning map, and this is hard for you to see, it's a very thin line of waterfront commercial and about 90% residential. So I think in any update, the current map needs to be corrected to show, you know, your existing map, because it's kind of incorrect, or it can give you a false impression that there's about 40% commercial and, you know, the remainder residential, where actually it's just a very thin line. So those are two points I want to make. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else for general public comment? Okay, seeing none, closed public comment. Scott, did you want to respond to any of the items brought up?
We do have the Panorama project slated for June 19th, so that item will be coming for you. It's where it is currently. We don't have any, we're not putting any other items on the agenda, it'll just be for that item, because of the interest from the neighborhood over there, so. And to speak to Ms. Truesdale's comments about we haven't responded, when you respond, when you provide comments toward an environmental document, we respond inside the environmental document when we bring it forward. So that's how those comments are, will be addressed inside the actual MND when we bring it forward to Planning Commission. As to Mr. Martini, I don't, we're not maintaining the mixed-use Area B moniker, but we're maintaining the zoning in that area as the same. And I'm not sure what he's referring to, the different uses. He'd have to maybe, if he'd like, he can come down and talk to me, and we can schedule some time to walk through it if you'd like, happy to do that. And the zoning map has in it and maintains, moving forward, or will maintain moving forward. We don't have a zoning map for the new zoning designations, we haven't released that yet, that'll be part of Module 4. But the zoning delineation in the area that Mr. Martini is talking about is by description. And so, you have, the zoning changes at the base of the bluff, and that's a physical location. So the map may or may not be accurate at this point, but it's a physical location where the line is drawn. We'll try to make the map more accurate when we bring forward the new map, but it's really based on where the foot of the bluff is in those locations, which is from there for the residential going up, so.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we'll bring forward the agenda item B1. This is the, this is case number UPO-514-CPO-565 at 1169 West Avenue in Morro Bay. Do we, do we have any ex parte communications anybody would like to declare? Okay, at this point, let's have a staff report. Nancy?
Just in general, I wanted to mention that there has been some public comment, and copies of those are in the back of the room, as well as extra agendas and staff reports. I also wanted to mention in the staff report, there is an error, hopefully it's the only error. It's on page 7, above the photograph. It says that the house on the south side of the subject property was built in 1986, and that's not correct, it was 2010. So if we're ready to proceed...
Okay.
This is the location of the site. We could take a field trip and walk a couple of steps and see it. It's on West Avenue, on the west side. An overview, the site is 8,610 square feet. It's a narrow, long lot, 42 feet wide and 206 feet long. The home proposed is 3,988 square feet on two levels. The lower level has two patios on the west side, 363 square feet, and a 638 square-foot rooftop deck on the second floor, on the west side. The home entry, because of the long, narrow lot, is similar to the other homes designed in that area. It's on the side of the property. So this is about midway on the north side. This home also has a pool courtyard, and that's on the opposite side, about midway through the lot. It also has 1,000 square feet of enclosed garage and storage area. This shows you the zoning of the site. It's duplex residential, it's in a PD zone, it's in the beach-street specific plan area, and it needs to comply with bluff development standards. It's not in the coast, or it is in the coastal zone appeals jurisdiction. This is the R2 zoning ordinance standards, and this outlines the standards for all of the front side, rear lot coverage. This proposed project complies with all of those setback standards, including the bluff edge setbacks for ground floor construction and second floor construction and height of roof deck fencing. This is just another aerial to show you proximity and view from this property looking west. The floor plans are large, so I cut them in half. So this is the west half of the site. I also colored in areas that are not living space, so you can see decks around the pool. In the top right is the entryway, that's the front door, and then the back area are covered This is the other half of the lower-level floor plan. Also colored in is driveway space, including the top right, that's a carport, but it's Second floor plan, same thing, the gray areas are roofs for the lower floor. So this shows you the area of the second floor on the west side, and it's set back appropriately from the bluff. This is the east side of the second floor. And this is front and rear elevations. And front and rear renderings. And if you note, the photograph for the front perspective shows the security fencing. Initially, this was noticed with a different rendering photo that showed a front fence and garage gate, and the applicant changed that to this solution for securing the front This is the north and the south elevations. And this is the condition on the northerly property line. There is an existing home constructed in 1925 that has an existing block wall on the property line, and the home is set back about six inches from the property line with viewing windows on the south side. So going back to this, you can see in the top elevation on the right side, there are very few windows looking that direction, they're very small, so that we can maintain some privacy between the homes, not we, the applicant. This is a proposed street view, showing the home next to the house I mentioned earlier that was built in 2010, and on the right side is the house we just looked at that was built in 1925. This is a view of the center courtyard that's on the south side of the house. And this is a neighborhood overview. The existing single-family homes along the west side of West Avenue range in size from 1,230 square feet to 3,611 square feet. Other homes on West Avenue have a similar design because of the long, narrow lots. And the ages of the homes on West Avenue range from 1925 to the current 1918, or 1918, 2018 proposal. And that concludes the staff presentation. We've included resolutions with conditions for approval.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for the staff? Joseph?
Just in the calculation of lot coverage, of course, it includes the habitable part of the house. It doesn't include the covered patios, and what about the garage? Is that in the calculation of lot coverage?
I believe it does not include covered patios.
It does not include covered patios. It would include oddity of the way our lot coverage calculation works, and it's something we're fixing in the update. It does, if we had decks that were extending into the, you know, outside of the setback, because you can lever into a setback, it would count the portion that goes into the setback. We don't have any of those in this scenario, so those don't count right.
Hmm.
Which is, again, an oddity of the way our code is written and the way that it's been interpreted over time. In fact, I have a very confusing memo, I guess, that was done several years ago to explain how that's calculated. It was supposed to help clarify sort of confusing in its own right, so. But anyway, that's how it's worked. So garages, sorry, garages do count, obviously, but the covered decks do not.
Jesse? Any questions?
Is there a pool on one of the other new houses on West, adjacent to the bluff? When I was looking at the various satellite images, it looks like there might be a pool closer to the bluff. I couldn't really tell. It looked like maybe two or three houses to the south.
I don't, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't call see one, but...
This would be the only house with the pool on the bluff?
On that portion of West, I believe so.
Okay.
Mike?
Nancy, can you just explain the city position about drainage for houses on West Street? Do they drain into West Street by requirement?
Away from the bluff into the street, correct.
That's a requirement of our code.
Right. And then, the other thing I was going to ask is, the adjacent neighbor with the lot line issue, in theory, does our building code require them to come back and sprinkler or put fire protection on the window that they're exposing the neighbor?
No.
Richard?
You know, with the city's one-water policy and this guy trying to build a pool right there, is there any, how many gallons is the pool, just out of curiosity?
Unclear, you might, the applicant might know.
Okay. And then, the other thing is, is it's kind of related. The last meeting we had here, we had an issue with a gate right next door. I noticed the gate's still there, and that was a condition not to have that there, so, you know, and when you look at this posting, it shows a fence there, so it's a little misleading to the public.
I mean, we'd be moving toward having the gate and fencing brought into compliance with the requirements, so.
But, I mean, that was like, last meeting, they got a gate up there, so...
So we'll be having them remove that, those things?
Like, soon, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a couple properties like that on the, on West Street. Okay, at this time, we'll open public comment for item B1 with the applicant. Care to make a presentation?
Thank you, Chairman Lord. Chuck Stevenson, I do have a PowerPoint I need to pull up and use the controllers. I'm Chuck Stevenson, I'm representing Darlene Reeves and Jerry Taylor, the applicants. They're not able to be here this evening, though. I wanted to just have a few remarks. I appreciate Nancy's presentation, she covered some of the details very well, and I wanted to just point out a few things that I wanted to mention relative to the design itself. I've designed several homes on West Avenue in past exchanges with your commission. I know there was interest in looking at some diversity of design, and so that's what we really focused on this one, and at the same time recognizing with Ms. Ford's home next door, a flat roof and a white building, we're trying to find a bridge with compatibility. And Ms. Reeves also was real interested in having a more sort of Mediterranean design, if you will, and a sort of a white, sort of low, flat-roof buildings that are common in some areas in the Mediterranean. So this was her desire as well, to try to find some bridge between design styles. This is a really unusual lot, 42.4 feet wide and 200 feet long, so it's difficult to get a home that works. And so much of the square footage of the area is taken up in hallways and just trying to get access, but if you take a look at the floor plan, they're reasonable-sized rooms, three bedrooms with a recreation room. It's not an unusual home in terms of that regard. One concern of mine from a design standpoint is to not have a two-car garage staring at you in the face, and so part of the design solution was to, was to split that garage into recess one back quite a bit, create a, it looks like a carport, it's more of an architectural feature to kind of create a sense of depth to that area. So that effort, I think, really pays off well for the design, in my view. The pool is an exercise pool for Ms. Reeves, it's only five feet deep, it's about 10 feet wide. She needs that for health reasons, and there is no prohibition against having a pool in Morro Bay, based on water. I think other than that, I'd be available for comments. I know there has been some public correspondence you've received, and I would like an opportunity to come back to the podium and respond to any questions that may come up.
Okay. If we have questions, we'll let you address them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward, state your name, you'll have three minutes. You might need to pull the mic.
Yes. Good evening, Karen Beckman, Morro Bay, and I'm speaking for Joyce Ford of Morro Bay. We welcome our new neighbor and thank Community Development for the consideration regarding my adjacent property as expressed in this proposed development. I acknowledge that my house is non-conforming, as it was built in 1925, and has been in my family since the early 40s, and it is my home. I expect and hope to live in it for the remainder of my life. A guiding principle of community development is that all new and remodeled development fit into the small-town scale of the community while preserving and strengthening the unique small coastal town image and character of Morro Bay. With this, I would like to speak to the neighborhood compatibility of the proposed project. Many of us were concerned about the hugeness of the south-adjacent house at 1155 West Street, built in 2010, currently the largest house on West Street at 3,600 square feet. We had been told by Community Development the design and build of that house would not again be allowed. Yet it appears that the mass and scale of the proposed is a repeat, and not even close to the other two recent builds of 2017 at 1149 and 1147 West Street, both at 2,900 square feet. How was the proposed allowable build size determined? The actual footprint is 3,800 square feet with an overall size of 4,881 square feet, and to be painted polar white would reflect sunlight and produce blinding glare in the neighborhood. If the proposed is built at the maximum height for bluff development at plus 25 feet with an overall size of 4,881 square feet, how is it then considered of a lower profile than the adjacent newer homes along the west side of West Avenue, per the staff report, page 7? Regarding the floor plan, an exterior stairway access to the second story has a master bedroom and game room showing sinks and refrigerators which could be converted to kitchens and used as vacation rentals. Will the proposed AC unit within the adjacent side yard setback be located away from my house and windows? I will need future access to the plaster surfaces and windows on the south side of my house for maintenance. Is it possible to prohibit the installation of a fence or wall up against the side of my house to grant periodic access to maintain and repair windows and stucco siding? I am concerned that the proposed drainage system will negatively affect the foundation of my house, as there is no indication for control relating to adjacent properties. Will the subsurface drainage for stability required by building be part of the major drainage system? If not, how would this system affect my property? Further concern is that my property will be damaged or adversely affected by machine-driven soil compaction, and I ask for control measures to provide protection against undermining my house and foundation. Finally, does the required automatic fire sprinkler system replace a firewall in the kitchen, as the kitchen would be located less than five feet from my house? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, please. Go? Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
Please state your name again.
Again? Yeah, Bill Martini.
I have been in the last person's house years ago. It's a real classic 1920s, actually a piece of history in Morro Bay. So I think, I don't know how this impacts it, but I think you need to consider, you know, the impact. It's kind of a low slung, almost like a Spanish feel to it. And I know how that is when you have something 25 feet tall, and it may have buffer, but you still are going to be looking down on it, and all those side windows will be affected. So if there's any way to soften the design just on her side, it would be something that would be well worth it, I think, for protecting, in fact, just across the road here, and it's a real classic if you're inside. I don't know if I was mistaken or not, but was that a tandem garage or two separate, two, one-car garages? Because I think with a lot 40-something feet wide, if that was tandem parking, I, that wouldn't make sense for a house this large to actually have tandem parking, that's very difficult, and it ends up half of that turning into a storage or laundry room and only one-car parking there. So if it's two separate garages side by side, but if it's tandem, you might think about accommodating a two-car garage. So I may have missed viewed the actual plans when it came on, but I would recommend a two-car garage as opposed to tandem parking, if that's the case. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this, this item? Okay, please step forward. Chuck, was it?
Thanks, Chairman Lord. Chuck Stevenson, again, just wanted to respond to a few things. I'm a little, first of all, I'm very supportive of Joyce Ford's house, it's a wonderful house. I've been in it, met her. A little surprised that she brings up the matter of maintaining the windows and walls, because I spoke to her about that, and I spoke to the owner about that, and Ms. Reeves is more than happy to allow her access to maintain that wall. Ms. Reeves is not going to grow any landscaping that would interfere with that, so very respectful of the history of that home, and for Ms. Ford as well. Certainly, we want to be very careful whenever we do foundations along that side, and very sensitive to the fact that we have that older, classic house... sensitive to the fact that we have that older, classic house nearby. So extra measures will be taken, and be very careful about doing footings in that area, very careful. We do have a geotechnical engineer that will be on the site doing inspections when foundations are dug and signing off on those. So we're very, very sensitive and aware of that issue. As far as the drainage goes, there was questions earlier. On each one of these homes that I've done on West Avenue, the drainage does all get engineered, approved by the city, and out to West Avenue. The only water that's allowed on the property is what falls on it on the back part, and we try to manage that with pervious materials and so forth. So very sensitive to that issue. This is not a tandem parking situation. There are two bays. Ms. Reeves does have a classic car that she wants to park in a tandem arrangement, but there are two-car parking that she can do side by side. I know that there's been maybe a little confusion on this, on the gate, the idea of the driveway gate. That's been eliminated. Ms. Reeves would like to know, and I'm not sure what the status of this with the future zoning ordinance, if this will be addressed, if gates at all will be addressed, driveway gates will be addressed in the upcoming zoning code. There are regulations in other communities that I've found that regulate those and have specific setbacks in heights and standards. What we don't have in Morro Bay is any, really anything in our policy documents or zoning that regulates those. So we would like to, I know there's a condition that prohibits it, but would appreciate your commission, again, discussing your reasoning and concern about driveway gates for the record on this one. Ms. Reeves is not proposing to do one, but if the zoning code changes in the future, and if there are some provisions for some kind of gate that's totally visible, low, but protected, provides protection, then we would like to be able to come back without having to amend this plan, which is very expensive and time-consuming, but rather work with a future ordinance if that's provided for. So just some language in the condition might be such that if the future zoning were changed and a gateway, driveway gate were provided for, the planning director may have some authorization. I know it's a lot of words, but there is concern. Ms. Reeves does have small pets, and she does have concern for security on West Avenue. I think those were my only responses to what I heard.
Okay. I've got a couple of questions that I've heard and read on some other correspondence. On the geotechnical report for this site, is there a requirement for subsurface compaction?
Oh, yes.
So you're going to overexcavate and then recompact?
Yes, just like we've done on the other ones. That is a standard requirement.
Okay. How far are you going to have to overex?
I believe it's 30-some inches generally.
Okay.
It's remove that material, put it back in, compact it in six-inch lifts to get a uniform base.
Okay. And how are you going to monitor the adjacent homes?
Well, our geotechnical engineer will be on site. That's a very critical thing. We want to be sure that there's no disturbance of those foundations at all. They might have to be hand-dug. The issue is what will machinery do in that area relative to those buildings? And that's, I'm not so concerned about the one to the south, more for Joyce's house.
Yeah, I'm more concerned about the compaction on that, you know, especially vibrator.
Very, very aware of that, very aware of that.
Okay. Then also about the color. That's been brought up a couple of times. I think that's a very, very stark white. Even the adjacent home is kind of an off-white. Are you dead set on having that polar bear white?
Ms. Reeves, I've had this discussion with her, and she is very set on this, on a white house. Now, there are shades of white, and I could talk to her about maybe taking it a tone down and keep it white, but she is very set on that. That's her dream.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Michael?
Mr. Stevenson, did you consider any water reclamation, or gray water, or rain barrels for the house? This is one of those projects that there's so much money being spent on it, and yet some of the simplest things to help offset some of our problems aren't being addressed. Is there anything like that in here?
Well, as far as rain catchment, we certainly could, I don't want to, it's going to be difficult in terms of the site because it's very constrained, and how many, and how many to be effective? I mean, I've got four at my house in San Luis Obispo, and I could have eight more. But where to put them, how they look, is a problem. And so I would say we would be certainly willing to do that, and she may want to, in order to reclaim some water for irrigation. That was certainly, if your commission wants to encourage that, or look for opportunities to do that, that would be fine.
Richard?
You mentioned a discussion for the fence before. And you used to sit on the planning commission in San Luis, right?
I'm on the city planning commission right now, I'm vice chairman.
Okay. So when you write conditions, you know, when you make your decisions, you expect those conditions to be adhered to, and if they're not, it's kind of disrespectful to the commission. And that's kind of what happened with this other project of yours. And now you're asking for another fence that already said that it's not allowed, okay? And so having this, talking in circles on this is not only a waste of our time, but staff's time. Hang on for a second.
Do you have a question?
No, I'm making a comment here, and it's also a waste of taxpayers' money.
Richard, this is for questions, I'm sorry. Okay, questions?
Did I hear, the property to the north, did I hear that that 19 circa 20 property is six inches from the property border?
Yes.
And are you contemplating putting a fence?
No.
So there will be no fence?
No. We've done everything we can to work with Joyce in terms of keeping all fenestration on that side, so that she protects her privacy. It's been important.
Jesse?
So pools inevitably leak, and on the bluff, it would be problematic, if not catastrophic, if that were to occur. What provisions are you putting in place to mitigate any potential leaks and soil problems coming from the pool?
To be honest with you, Commissioner, I haven't dealt with that. I'm assuming it won't leak, so I don't know. We can certainly address that with our pool contractor and take whatever measures are necessary to assure that won't happen. But I'm not familiar with a technique that would, or pool construction enough to answer your question.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
One more, excuse me, one more question. On the AC, it looks like there's a compressor located adjacent to the neighbor's house or neighbor's wall. Does that compressor have to stay there?
We can find a better location.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll work with Joyce on perhaps a better location for that.
Okay. And would you be willing to have a condition here that would grant maintenance access to the neighbor?
I'm not sure about that. I think we're willing to, all we need is some notice, a week or two's notice. As long as Ms. Reeves is at the house, she would want to be sure she's there, and she's not, she's going to be living full-time. But I'd rather keep it out of a condition of approval. Certainly willing to work with her on any time she needs to get in there, we just need some notice.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
Yeah, one more question. Do you have a central vacuum system in this house?
I don't know that one's planned for yet.
Okay, thank you.
And I did want to just, with all due respect, I didn't mean to offend Commissioner Sodowsky. What my concern has been is that I've looked and asked staff repeatedly, where in the zoning code is a prohibition against a driveway gate? Where in the policy is one? And so, and there's been no findings for those. So as a planning commission, you know, your job is to administer the general plan and zoning ordinances and not set policy. And I'm just looking for some link to something where if we came in with a low gate setback from the street that was attractive, why not? And I'm just, that's all I'm curious.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, I'll close public comment on this item, and well, do we have another? Okay, I'll, you know, we haven't closed the public comments, so Betty, if you wish to address this.
Thank you, Betty Winholz. It's difficult for me to get here because of my job, so I appreciate that.
And we shifted the agenda around.
Oh, did you?
We're going to try to bring the items forward earlier in the meeting, so we can keep the general comments separate from the particular comments for the items.
So I'm addressing the bluff property now.
The bluff property off West Street.
Okay, great. So I sent an email to the planner asking several questions and did not receive any answers back. And so I'm hoping that either you got some answers or you will ask those questions for me. And I think primarily they were about what I was hearing about the pool, my concern about having been cut into the bluff from the property below, and what impact that's going to have with cutting in for a swimming pool, and how that is just going to, I just can't imagine what the potential catastrophic thing could happen there. And so there may be ways to fix that, and so I hope that's being addressed. I was concerned about retaining your authority in terms of a specific plan, that you get to see the drainage plan, that you get to see the landscaping plan, and that that's not, you know, diverted or wait until later after, when they're ready for the building permit. That seems to me at a higher level of review, you all get to see that, because that's why we have the overlays. So that was looking at your authority, and then the fencing on the front, I don't know if you've already addressed that, there was the potential for a little fence on the bluff, and I didn't know where that stood. And I can't remember all of them, but I think those were most of them, and I think you have a copy of my questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, bringing it back to the commission. Scott, do you wish to address any of the items that were brought up?
As far as the wall that's being constructed down on Front Street, I mean, their engineer for this project will have to take that into consideration when they bring back construction documents, as will their soils engineer. I mean, that would apply both to that, to overall construction for the house as well as for the swimming pool.
Yeah, and I'd just like to comment that the swimming pool's only five feet deep. It's well beyond the angle of repose of that bluff, so I don't think there will be any problem geologically with that.
I mean, I wouldn't, you know, as far as the drainage plans, that's not something normally the planning commission looks at. That's something that's normally developed after you've had all the engineering done for the project and those types of things, and they're submitted at building. So that's sort of normally how that happens. Again, requirements for drainage for this property are specifically dealt with in the bluff standards for the zoning code, which is housed in, I believe, section 1745040, and requires drainage to be directed out towards the street.
The fence along the bluff property?
Yeah, I'm looking for that, hold on a second.
Can I interject for a second?
Sure.
So I'll get to the fence in a second, but I wanted to mention that the position and the placement of the heating and air conditioning system is in condition 16.
Okay.
It needs to be in an enclosed room, and that's what they proposed, and that's what is in the condition. The drainage condition, or drainage situation is addressed in planning condition number 18, and it requires that they provide a copy of their drainage plan when they do building permit submitted to both neighbors on the north and the south, and provide evidence of notification to the planning department that that has been done. And then finally, the geotech report, there's condition 11 that requires the geotechnical engineer to take consideration of current existing conditions, and that's because the original report was done before the development at the base of the bluff. So I wanted to make sure that when they got to building permit drawings, that they had an updated report and analysis to go with that.
Okay. And as far as development within the bluff buffer and bluff setback area, that's addressed in section 1745070A1. Allows for development on the bluff face, actually, so there's no prohibition for fencing in that location.
Okay.
And I think with the, going back to trends, I think what the planning commission has traditionally required, and I think this project follows that as a, from the edge of the bluff standpoint, you have to setback the fencing five feet, so as not to have that sort of dramatic look from below, you know, it steps it back a little bit. I think that's been the tradition that we've had on at least the recent homes that were approved by the planning commission.
Okay. Okay, Richard, do you have any comments or questions? I mean, Joe, I'm sorry. Like I said, I was going to need help tonight. You want me to start off? Yeah, why don't you go ahead and start off.
I'm particularly concerned about that house to the north, because I do regard, even though I'm a recent arrival to Morro Bay, I really regard that as a noteworthy landmark of the city and really wish to preserve it in all its glory and eccentricity. With respect to the design of the applicant, I appreciate that it does have a flat roof, a lower profile, and I like the treatment of the garage doors, so that you're minimizing the sort of dominating garage door at the front of the house look, which none of us find very attractive. It is a large house. I guess, you know, one of the questions we're going to have to resolve here is, is it not in keeping with the houses in the neighborhood? Is it too large? Is it roughly equivalent? More on that to come. The white color, as requested by the applicant, seems pretty stark and likely, I suppose, to increase the sort of the more massive look of the house. You know, I, for one, am not a particular fan of great expanses of stucco on a large house. That's my taste, but I realize I'm not here to impose my taste on other homeowners, but I wish that it were other than entirely stucco. So again, the issue, I suppose, for me, will be whether it is really compatible with the existing neighborhood, and I'll be interested in what the opinion of my fellow commissioners I am wondering what the policy is here for an adequately sized house. I mean, by all the objective standards, the applicant seems to have met them. So what sort of discretion do we have when the objective standards are met, but there is still a sort of subjective notion that perhaps even though objective standards have been met, it's not quite compatible with the neighborhood?
I mean, you have discretionary authority over the project, and part of what you're doing with that discretionary authority is determining whether the project fits into the neighborhood, neighborhood compatibility. And so, I mean, from a staff standpoint, there was concern related to the size, for sure. I mean, it's much larger than any other homes. It's much larger than any home that we've had that's come forward recently. I would say, you know, the one location in town, there might be others, but that you could have a house that's this size, might be in this location. It's just because you won't notice the size of it so much, because it's a very narrow lot. So, and it's not in the center of another neighborhood, standing out on, you know, that you could, standing out in a point or a corner or something like that, where it would be much more obvious. That being said, it's quite a bit larger than the other homes that are over there. And so, I mean, that's why you didn't see a lot of narrative in the staff report from staff on that was because, yes, it's large, probably one of the larger homes that we've seen in recent times, since I've been here anyway. But... But, again, because of the nature of the lot, the narrowness of it, its expression from the street's going to appear similar to the one, other ones that are there, and probably similar from the bluff down below of the other houses that are there, because you're only going to see the very back of it from the bluff, from below the bluff. So we brought it forward without much narrative and figured the Planning Commission, this is kind of in your wheelhouse, and you'd weigh in and state what you thought about its compatibility or lack thereof with the neighborhood.
And, yeah, I thank you for that, because in a general sense, to my view, it looks similar to the houses that are already there. However, as it stands in contrast to the last house to the north, it's monumental, and I think that's a point worth considering. And then, a couple, a couple of things that came forward out of the discussions here. I'm always concerned beyond the current owners of the property, what sort of problems we create for subsequent owners. So with respect to the, to the ability to maintain the property to the north, I would really hate to see some difficulties arise between neighbors sometime in the future with different owners, and a fence go up. So I would really want something to run with the land that said that property to the north had the ability somehow to maintain their portion of the property, and really not want a subsequent owner to. With respect to the fence, I think I heard it clearly, but, but any fence that goes up at the front of the property, the front of the property facing the street, will comply with the, I believe it's a four-foot fence if it's transparent, or a three-foot fence if solid, so that's not an issue. And then, the pool, I hadn't really thought about, again, the pool as a, as a problem decades from now, and the leak and water building up behind, you know, those walls that, that were at the bluff. So, you know, we should really look closely at that. I'm not quite sure what we do, but we want to make sure that there isn't a problem years down the line, at these, because I'm familiar with pools and leaks and well, and they're so, they're so slow-moving that they're sometimes difficult to even perceive, but suddenly you have a, have a major problem. I don't know, I'd want to hear from what the rest of the commission has to say.
Okay. Jesse?
Yeah, so, this is a difficult one. You know, with the restrictions on the narrowness of the lot, I realize that the design kind of, kind of probably designed itself. I mean, you had to just do what you had to do to make what you had to make work. I guess, if I had any comments, they would be, I really didn't understand how the lot coverage worked, because when I was doing the math, it just didn't seem to add up. But now that you're saying that certain things don't count and certain things do, that kind of makes sense. It does, it did seem like it was over 50%. I think I came up to like 57 or 58 by the time I was doing my math. I really think the pool's a bad idea. I'm kind of thinking, you know, and what I do for a living, I mean, I'm thinking worst-case scenario, so in a seismic event, you know, the pool cracks, it finds a, it finds a way down the bluff and, you know, half the backyard goes with it. You know, what does that do to the people on the other side, on the downhill slope of that? So I'm not in favor of that pool, just for the record. So the neighbor to the north, I realize they have a legal not, I'm assuming a legal not-conforming setback. And I, while I do respect the property rights of the Reeves, I would like, I do agree with Joe that we should protect the ability to maintain that legal not-conforming setback with, with provision to not obstruct their ability to maintain their residence as needed. So I think that's all I have.
Okay. Richard?
To me, this is a pretty glaring example of how a not neighborhood, about neighborhood incompatibility. To me, I don't know about Mediterranean, but it kind of looks West Palm Beach-ish to me. And what, the massing of the house and the way that it's going to sit on the bluff, I think that, that this, this is a, a, a project that, that I, I think that needs to be revisited as far as neighborhood compatibility. And I also am concerned about any pools, especially on the bluff issue, on the bluff there, and also the, you know, we talked about the drainage before, Scott, we, on other jobs on West Street, how they drain. And I'm going to repeat, and I know Public Works, you know about what they say, but when we have a drainage that goes on West Street, and the way it's drained, that, that is something that Public Works should take into account more consideration, especially since they're talking about infiltration of sewer lines right there, and the way that that drains into West Street with that, with the, with the way they do it, you know? And I'm not saying that you could do something else, but at least, we should really make sure that that sewer line is, is in good shape, so we don't reduce I and I. That's something that you could just talk to Rob Leibig about. So that's the drainage issue. And then, also, but my, my, my opinion is that it doesn't fit into the neighborhood.
Michael?
Well, I wish the neighborhood looked more like this one than the Spanish-style ones. The one thing about this is, I think it's, it's a stealth big house. I can't comment on why someone needs a house this big, that's kind of out of my purview. But if you are going to have a house this big, by splitting up the massing into these narrow pieces, and, and having the setbacks for the upper floors so far away, I think this house is going to look significantly smaller and have less of an impact on the street than any of the places to the south. And I think it'll be similar to the, to the, to the water. I think it's actually going to be the nicest one up there, in terms of what it looks like from the water. I don't have any trouble with white. I wish we had more white, less blue in town. Blue's my least favorite color, especially in the backgrounds up there. I have concerns about things like the pool, more from an ethical water point of view than I do from, the owner is taking on a huge risk. This, this is an insurance issue that they're going to have to be aware of, and just like the mechanics of building a house this large, in this kind of soil condition, with the pilings and vibration, that's really no different than we'd have any other place around here. I'm not crazy about stucco, but we don't have a discretion to change palette of materials, and all the houses on the street are stucco. I think that when the east side of West is done at some point, the projects will be larger, and they'll, they'll seem like this. I think when the adjacent owner to the north at some point chooses either them or legacy down the line, we'll, we'll see something large there as well. So I don't see much, I am concerned about access to the adjacent house. I'm kind of shocked, we don't have building issues about six inches off the property line with all those windows, because my understanding of the building code is that would trigger fire shutters on those windows. And it was interesting that in the, in the testimony, the person was asking about protection of their property from the kitchen five feet away when their windows are on the property line. And I would say, what are you doing to protect my property? The last piece is, the lack of a site plan scares me a bit, because if we look at the rendering, I don't know if you can go back to the one that shows the property to the north. I'm not 100% sure exactly what I'm seeing and how much we have. Can you go back a couple? Or maybe, Mr. Stevens? It's the one other one you have from the front. It's actually in the packet that we have as well. One thing, if we find it, it appears that there's a white wall that goes the length of the property, and I'm not sure if that's a stylized version of the existing wall of the neighbor to the north, or if that was a new wall that was being placed in there. No, it's, it's actually a rendering, it's in, it's in the packet that we have, but that's it. So that wall to the right, is that, is that a new wall, or is that a stylized version of the adjacent north property wall?
That is not a new wall, and as far as I, my understanding is, we're leaving that wall the way it is, not touching it with paint or anything.
And the other thing I, I guess I would say is, this appears that the two garages actually lie down and narrow a bit as we're getting toward the street, which leaves a larger landscaped area shown to the, to the north, as well as one to the south. And I think that's pretty significant, because I think if you look at the Google Earth images of the adjacent properties, they're almost all paved 100%. I don't know how they got away with that much lot, that much solid coverage, but I would like to condition it that we have something similar to the amount of paved space that we see in the rendering that was submitted, and that we don't back away from that and pave the whole front like the adjacent one to the south is. And I, you know, the nature of the landscaping, I think it would be an interesting thing to see down the line, but I'm not going to necessarily be concerned about conditioning that.
And we actually have a landscape plan. It was submitted, it's crude because it, but it meets the criteria, it just wouldn't show well because it's such a long, narrow lot.
That's all I have. Okay. Yeah, my concerns are mechanical noise to the, to the adjacent neighbor, so as long as that's conditioned, you know, that they, that compressors and stuff are, you know, hot water, tankless hot water heaters are not, you know, adjacent to the neighbor to the, to the north. Also, I would like to see some kind of a compaction monitoring, you know, during compaction have, you know, if it's, you know, if the neighbor complies to the north to, to have access for the, during compaction, especially close to the property line, that there's a, a regimen to monitor the, the effects of compaction on the neighboring house. I'm not worried about the pool as much, you know? I don't think there's as much water, even if it, it's not going to be the breaking of the LA dam, even if it does leak. I think it'd be a slow-motion item, and it's five feet, it's, you know, eight feet across or something. If, you know, she's taking on the liability of any damage that caused by that, but I just, I just don't see that as a major issue other than the water use. And I think, you know, that's what they're going to have to, to do, you know, to, to deal with. So, you know, I may be wrong on that, but I just don't think it is a, as a major issue. It's well back from the bluff, it's not at the angle of repose, so, you know, water gushing down isn't going to create a rivulet, you know, that'll suck all the houses down. The geology is not there to support that, but I'm not big one way or the other. I don't, I'm not bothered by the mass or the scale. I think the massing was done extremely well to break, to articulate both facades, and the mass of the building is basically in the interior between those facades. And so, I think this is one of, you know, I, big houses are not bad just because they're big, is my, my thoughts on it. And so, I'm not as bothered by it, but what I am bothered by is, I didn't see any direct layout, or it was hard to tell, about where the adjacent houses are on this, regarding the setbacks of this property. Seems this property is brought further forward to the street than the adjacent properties by quite a bit. And so, part of our compatibility issues, we're trying to keep, keep houses, you know, pretty much lined up as far as how, the setbacks from the street. So do you have a better slide that shows that?
You know, I didn't bring this slide because I thought it would be hard to see, but there is a site plan that shows a little bit of outline. I'm copying it.
Yeah, a little bit, but I can't see the one to the south. And then, I'm, I'm bothered by the polar white, you know? It's going to make the house stand up, even the adjacent house has a, has a tinted, you know, has a slight more earth tone to the white than, than this would be. And I, there's, there's quite literally a million whites, and so I think, you know, more earth tone approach to that would, would soften this house considerably. And I do believe that we should, we should condition this to grant a maintenance, maintenance access to the adjacent property, so that with proper notification and, you know, equal compliance, you know, or equal notification, that they can work up terms between them to, to be able to keep their house in good, good order. Okay, I think that's, that's my major consideration. I would love to see, seeing solar panels and, you know, catchments on this and stuff too, but, you know, we don't have the ability to, to regulate that at this point. And, once again, you know, seeing as we didn't get a very good landscape plan, you know, the, having, you know, having, you know, concrete instead of permeable pavers or something, we, I think we need to have the hardscape be permeable rather than, than, you know, poured concrete. So, are we ready for conditions, or are we ready for motions? Okay. Richard?
One thing just, just occurred to me.
Did it again. Joseph? I apologize, Joseph.
We spent a fair amount of discussion looking at the, the east and west facades and articulations and breaking up the facades. And typically, we look at the front and the back of the houses. Why? Because the house is situated between two existing houses, and you can't really see the sides. But here, I realize, you can really see that northern side facade, its whole length. And to me, that looks like it's a massive, unbroken-up kind of facade, which we really don't want to encourage in Morro Bay, but which we often let pass. Why? Because it's difficult for it ever to be seen. But here, it's not. And it's all the more contrasting because of the age of the house to the north and the particular adobe Mexican style. I, if I'm standing there at that corner, looking past the 1925 house, looking at that facade, I'm going to think that's very massive and not what we should be encouraging. That's my comment.
I had, I had another thought. I meant to bring this up earlier, I forgot. Once we approve this, we lose control of solar. It seems very important to me to put solar on the roof, but not to put it where it's visible from the Embarcadero. So, I mean, with a flat roof, they would have to angle this, the array to get it to the proper, and I know, once we, once we approve this, we lose, we lose, you know, some of the, some of the building and the state mandates kind of, they take over, we don't, we lose control. So I don't know if it's possible, but if it is, I would like to condition it that any solar array not be visible from the Embarcadero.
I don't think that's easily done. And literally, you know, five or 10-degree slope is all you need on the, on the solar arrays. Okay, so where do we stand? Are we, are we ready to, to apply some conditions, or?
Hey Jerry, I've got a question for you. You were talking about a maintenance for the neighbor.
Yes.
Is that going to be an easement that you're going to require there, so access easement?
No, I don't think, I don't think we need to bring it up to a level of an easement. No, I don't think, I don't think we need to bring it up to a level of an easement. I think we just need to, I would see it as a condition of the property, a condition on the development on the CUP that they, with consultation and notification, that they would have access to do maintenance on that facade on the northern, northern property. So Scott, have you seen those before or?
You mean like an agreement type thing?
Yeah, either agreement or just a condition.
The only way they ever used them, you know, in the past really is for larger pieces of property. And they're recorded, they were recorded documents that were, you know, they didn't want to go with an easement because easement grants you rights, you know, any time of the day, which I don't think is appropriate probably for this type of scenario, but if they were to record agreement between the two, then they could spell out the week's notice, that type of thing, you know, for it, and so then they could have that recorded.
Okay. Yeah, I think I would, I would be happy with an agreement condition, condition of an agreement or however we state that. Okay, so what I, okay, so let's talk about size and mass. You know, I wasn't bothered about it, we won.
I just want to say one thing to Joe.
Yeah.
You know, again, the house in the north, that's got to be at least a six foot, if not seven foot, if not eight foot wall that goes significantly longer than that elevation. So, really when you're looking down the street, what you'll see is above the line of the tops of the doors. So you'll actually not see that elevation as if no wall was there at all, the wall's obscuring everything and the massing on the top does have a few offsets that are pretty significant in terms of the way that works. And the one on the south is, has a significant cut where the pool is. So that's really different.
And each wall elevation is set in, I mean, you're looking at a plan view there, but it, it steps in because the entryway walks along that one north side and so that width of that entryway, that entire wall steps in where the door is. And then it pops back out towards the, towards the north, moving towards the bluff and that face on. So there is quite a bit, there'll be a big shadow line there, actually.
Okay, so I see, I basically see a few issues we need to either address or agree on or condition. So, you know, size and mass, you know, other than Joseph here. I think we might, I'm kind of reading it as, you know, four to one for approval?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, it seems like they checked the boxes, I mean.
Yeah, okay.
I will defer to Michael's judgment on that. That sounds, well, that's persuasive.
Are your mics on?
No, I'm sorry.
No, I think Commissioner Lucas's comment is persuasive. I wasn't seeing that facade with the existing wall in place and there are indentations and I'm not certain one way or other on my opinion of it, but.
Yeah, I, my opinion on that is, with that blinding polar white, I don't think you'll be able to see any of that articulation.
Okay, so that brings up color. Okay, where, Michael, you're okay with the white?
I, at the very least, would like to see it toned down to something, if it has to, I'm okay with a white, but I do not want a brilliant white there, I want something.
I've spent time in the Mediterranean and I don't remember seeing really bright white houses. I remember seeing dingy houses, which were probably dirty, but I mean, they could tone it down just a little bit, that wouldn't hurt anything.
Did you, did I talk you, I'm losing track here on the color?
Oh, yeah, it kind of changed.
Okay, and I'm, so that's pretty much agreement. We need to get a more, more of an earth tone, white, you know.
Can we ask to look at, to study the house color next door? Because it appears to be light. We can't be asking to go darker then.
No, 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 I'm not, I don't have a problem with white, I just, you know, just a polar white I think is, is too stark. You know, I don't have a problem with the white that the neighboring house is, you know, so, yeah. So, okay, so, and then, pool, you know, where do we stand on the pool?
Again, the idea of insurance and I would, I would hope that some form of this discussion ends up in some sort of a record that's available over time so that if a problem does arise, it's clear that the applicant and developer are on notice that this could present a problem and that they decided to go ahead with it anyway. I guess that'd be sufficient.
Personally, you know, I'll interject here, I don't know how we could condition this project to no air pool.
If I may, you know, I want to let people do what they want to do and I just want to help mitigate these potential problems in the future. So what I would encourage the designer to do is to look into some sort of an alarm system or some sort of, some sort of mitigation that, hey, we're losing 100 gallons a day, there's a problem, kind of thing, so.
You guys okay on that?
Showing an image of Mykonos Greece on the door.
Okay, and then, Scott, do you have any answers for how we can monitor compaction and damage to the adjacent property?
So, I mean, we could, we could just add that into one of the conditions related to monitoring, they're, they're going to have to have a geotech out on site while they're doing, while they're doing that. And we can just say, we can add to the duties of that person that they, and maybe we have that included in the contract, that they monitor the adjacent foundation and adjacent house related to that, you know, that work, so.
Okay.
And so we can have that, and we can have them put that into the contract, so they have to give us a copy of the contract that says, yes, they will do that.
Okay.
Okay, so I've done, I've done that on projects in the past for various issues, especially on bluff top projects actually, not here though, when I was in Pismo when it was.
That's the question, when, when that happens, do you have to have an existing study of the existing house to show where there's minor cracking and things like that in the stucco system?
Well, I would suggest that they do that, you know, you know, from a liability standpoint, they would probably make a lot of sense that they go through that process in case there was some dispute about whether something was damaged or not.
Okay, so I think that's, that's the list I had, does anybody else have any major issues that they want to bring up?
Just that solar thing that we mentioned.
Okay, just condition it, or just, yeah, condition it that the solar is not visible from, from the embarked arrow?
And then you wanted pervious pavement?
And.
That's approximately what we're seeing in terms of percentage of the front yard rendering.
Yeah, that'd be subject to the evaluation and approval by the soils engineer?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Of course, we'll, we'll defer to the experts on that.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, do I have a, do we, do we have a motion?
It's going to be a tough one.
Yeah. Anybody want it?
Well, so what are, what are we actually going to condition? The, the solar, the color?
Okay, did you, did you take that down as a list?
Yes, so the conditions are conditioned to record agreement to accommodate the neighbors' properties so that they have access and maintenance to the wall at the home at 206 Surf, as long as home exists within the setback area. Conditioned to keep narrow driveway as shown, I reword that to.
Yeah, and as a pervious paver.
And then I had a separate, add impervious pavement with geotech approval.
Yes, okay.
No solar visible from embarked arrow and compaction monitoring during work near neighbors, I'm going to add that to condition number 11 and require that they have a contract that they provide to the city that calls out that that has to be monitored and there may be existing condition inspection of the neighboring home.
Okay, and then color?
Color, to a less brilliant white, more earth tone.
Okay. Did you want, okay, that's a question actually, do you want it to be less similar to what's proposed and more similar to the white that's next door? Is that what you were, you know, I mean, that's, that gives me a range to work with.
Right, right.
Less brilliant is like, okay, this one's, you know, it's got a light reflectivity value that's, you know, two numbers less.
Yeah, I think it needs to be, you know, toned to the minimum of the house next door, the white, and that's still a fairly, fairly white, white, but.
Everybody else?
But that's my opinion. Michael?
The lighter it is, the more the house helps itself, light itself during the daytime and avoid using power.
I'm going to defer to the authority there, he's.
I'm going to, I'm going to opt for greater compatibility with that house to the north, sacrificing it.
Thereabouts.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll leave it in your capable artist eye.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, I think that's, those are the conditions that I've, that I've noticed.
I didn't have anything else.
Okay, then let's. Jesse, go for it.
Ah. I don't know that I can move this, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Let me see if I can find it. Okay, I move that we adopt resolution number PC 14-18 on exhibit A, approving the coastal development permit CPO-565 and conditional use permit UPO-514 to allow construction of a new 39, 3,988 square foot, single family dwelling on the bluff property in the coastal appeal jurisdiction at 1169 West Street with the added conditions that we just discussed. Any discussion? Motion in a second? Okay, please call the question.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski?
No.
Commissioner Barone? Commissioner Ingraffia?
I'm going to say no.
Chairperson Lor?
I'll go yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much and I'm sorry for the wait for the second item. And I do believe that we will have a discussion on gates and gated driveways in the future, if not, if not soon when we have the LCP come forward, the GP. So moving, you know, I apologize to the, to the public, moving forward, this is, we'll bring forward item B2 and this is the, a concept plan review at 2996 Alder Avenue in Morro Bay, California. Can Nancy, do you have a staff report?
Yes, I do. And first I wanted to mention that this was noticed as an action item and the applicant and staff agreed that it would be better presented to as a conceptual review, so there is no resolution, no action required other than your recommendations and comments.
Okay.
This is, all right, this is a proposed three family apartment at 2996 Alder on the corner of Alder and Sequoia. It's actually surrounded on three sides by streets, also on Birch. The subject site is about in the center and you can see it's got three different zones. It's, that block from the subject site south is R4 SP, there's single family residential to the east, there's multifamily R3 to the north and there's mixed commercial residential to the west. The project zoning R4 is multifamily hotel professional and the site is in an area where it's, could be considered a buffer between higher density uses and lower density uses. The project proposes three family style, or family size apartments with parking on the lower level and typically it would be allowed under administrative approval. The reason it's here is there's a couple of issues we wanted to run by you. It's building height, R4 allows 30 feet from the average natural grade. North Main Street specific plan encourages two story over parking to a max of 25 feet. This is two story over parking, it's very slightly subterranean, it's maybe a foot below. Planning commission, there's a provision in that section that allows planning commission to approve up to 30 feet in height to encourage rough line variations. The other issue is parking, there's a lower level combined open, not open to the outside, but a combined parking garage for all three residential units. And the site is tight because it's surrounded on three sides by streets and sidewalks and public right of way. And so, the current design shows two compact spaces, two standard sized spaces and a required van accessible space. So it shows five spaces, six spaces are required because the units are all, there's one two bedroom units and two three bedroom units. The other parking concern is the setback on Sequoia, the zoning code requires 20 feet and we have 15 feet in this situation. This is a perspective from Alder Avenue and you can see the third floor is setback from Sequoia and from Alder and from Birch. This is another perspective from Birch. This, we had staff do a little research to find out when the last three unit rental was approved in Morro Bay and we found one, this, this project at 405 Pacific, it's at the northeast corner of Pacific and Monterey, was approved in December 2014. It's three market rate rental units on a parcel with an existing single family home. It has the same zoning, R4, without the SP. It's a two, two and three story building, three story building is allowed up to 30 feet in height. And it's a smaller, it's, it's more units on a similarly sized lot with two car parking garages for each unit. To summarize the project, we were looking for some direction regarding the height. There's a concern that three family units would not be possible without approval of a greater height. I did ask the applicant to, to look at the third floor and see if a flat roof would, how much that would reduce the height of the project. The partial third story is setback from the property lines, which is in the design standards for multi-story projects in a mixed neighborhood with a variety of sizes. And the parking requirements, again, it's got streets on three sides, the applicant would like to know if there's justification for five spaces instead of six and that really is caused because of the requirement for van accessible space. And again, they've already submitted a request for a parking exception to allow 15 foot setback for the garage entrance and compact sized spaces instead of all required standard sized spaces. And that concludes the staff presentation.
I would like to add something. The reason, one, after we noticed the project is when we, in looking at the plans, we were developing the staff report, identified that an ADA accessible parking space was required and was not shown. And so, that was sort of the tilting factor and saying, maybe we should just take this as conceptual review because now we're asking for several different things. One of the ideas though, and the commission has commented on this several times, is how do we encourage developments on zoning that allows for denser development to max out? We don't really have that requirement in most of the zones and we're always trying to look toward that. And so we thought this was a good example of, you know, a house providing rental housing, which is sorely needed in the city and, you know, and bringing it forward so you could see what it would take to make it work on a lot of its size. And so, it's also this kind of the secondary reason that we wanted to bring it forward is. as a concept review, just to sort of get your input about what is acceptable and what isn't. We didn't really think that the fifteen-foot versus the twenty-foot setback for the garage was much of an issue, because it's not a garage door. You're not parking in front of it. It's gonna have a gate, and it's gonna open, and you're gonna drive in. The policy seems at the twenty-foot level, the twenty-foot requirement to have been written to address individual garage doors and not this scenario. I think hence the reason we have parking exceptions allowed in our ordinance. I just wanted to provide at least a little bit of context here, because it's, it's not only valuable in talking about it for this project, but it's valuable for the planning commission overall in looking at these types of things and what it takes to make these projects work in these locations in town, and whether it's appropriate or not, and then, looking at the bigger picture, you're going to be seeing, you're gonna be seeing document, policy documents come forward in the form of the zoning code, where we can either encourage these types of things, or say, no, absolutely, we don't want thirty-foot buildings in this area of town, or that type of thing. So it was, it seemed timely, one, and, and, you know, to have the conversation, and so that's, that's sort of why it's brought forward in the form that it is. Probably not normally something you would see from us, because we'd be working on it internally at staff level, but it raised several issues that were of import to the commission recently, and so that's why it's here.
Questions for staff? Or can we get into public comment?
I got another question. First, thanks, Scott, for bringing it, you know, to, to us. Can you explain to me, like, why the van accessibility, is that, that's that part of the ADA thing?
It's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Once they went from, you know, that, once they went from a, a, a two-unit project wouldn't be required to have that.
Oh, okay.
But once you get into three, you have to have it, so.
Okay.
And it was unfortunate that we didn't catch it before, we were dealing with some of the other aspects of it, and, you know, the building department's been a little in flux, and so when I looked at it, when I was reviewing the staff report from Nancy, I was like, oh, the problem. And so, and so we went back and started doing, looking into it, and saying, is there any exceptions, you know, that we can apply that would negate the need for it? And the answer to that question was no. Couldn't find any exceptions, and so you have to put this parking space in, blows the parking. And so, you think, oh, it's one less space, but in reality, unless you have somebody that's using the space there, it's actually two less parking spaces, fortunately. And it's a very small project, right? These are the types of things, the infill properties that we have, and we want to encourage denser development, but then you have things here that, that maybe don't mesh into doing that, but those are the types of properties that we have. We have small property, we don't have large properties in town, and so these are the, these are the issues that we're going to continue to run into if we're trying to reach the densities that are allowed on these properties to try to encourage housing. Again, it's, it's a timely issue and not an easy, I don't think any of this stuff is easy, but I think it's definitely worth discussion.
And one more thing, Scott. You know, you mentioned that, you know, it is, it's a density issue, and it's, you know, we have, we do have a rental housing problem. However, how do we, 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 do we have any kind of circular kind of inspection that, you know, like, what's to say this thing doesn't turn into a condo and I'll send it's , I'm sure, Airbnb?
Fair question. Right now, it's, it's not approved that way. It's approved as, I mean, it's not approved that way. It's not proposed that way. It's proposed as rental housing. If they wanted to do condos, they'd have to bring a map forward that would require a coastal development permit and have that approved with this board.
Okay.
Is that, they'd have to design it to do that. That's not what they're proposing, so that's not what's gonna happen at this point.
Right. I get that.
And they're likely not going to design it, it's something that could be condoed later. It's more expensive to do those, those types of things, especially with the garage underneath it. So, so yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't see that as much of an issue moving forward, as I, as I might if they were condos, then certainly, you know, whatever our vacation rental ordinance ends up being, then maybe one of these could end up being a vacation rental. As it stands right now, the draft ordinance has buffers in residential zones, so would place separation requirements between this and other ones, so you wouldn't get a whole bunch. Thank you.
So, unit, so I see the elevator, so unit one would be fully accessible?
I don't think we've gotten to that level of it. We said they have the elevators, they can, they can make it accessible, and then had to have the parking space, so yeah.
Joseph?
There's nothing that says they can't divide the property up with keeping it a single ownership with, like, Z-shaped things or townhouse-type things. This is the choice to do an apartment building with a lower-floor garage. That's just one typology you could put on the site out of many.
It could be, it could be condos, it could be town, it could be townhomes. It would be, it would likely be in different configurations.
You could, for instance, I mean, I'm, well, that's common.
Yeah. Okay, let's, we'll open it up for public comment, and would the applicant like to come forward?
Chairman Lor, Chuck Stevenson, again, representing AJ Wright and Phil Davis on this project. I do have a PowerPoint, and so I, if I could get that loaded up once again.
Okay, great. Can we have some, you need technical help?
Okay, very good. Yeah, again, Chuck Stevenson, I wanted to thank staff, in particular Scott Graham, for working on, working with us on this one. We did run into a few unforeseen issues, but we think we, with your commission's favorable feedback to us, we think we can probably make this thing work. So it does raise some big issues for us in planning, and this is an opportunity to do something a little bit innovative with a relatively small lot. It is located in a R four, the whole block is zoned for your highest-density zoning category, and it's adjacent to commercial. The houses on, on Alder, between Alder and Birch are, are older. Some might argue that they've, they're reaching perhaps their useful life in terms of a future redevelopment, and that's perhaps why the city has been looking at this as R four for some time. This is just a site plan roughly square, seventy-five by eighty feet. What's some of the advantages for this design that I put into this was that to really attract a size, a range of household sizes. So there's, there are, there are certain larger ones, but clearly in the city of Morro Bay, we need a variety of apartment sizes for different household sizes. I tried to deal with the scale and mass, and then reduced the second and third floor setbacks. The garage is slightly recessed, as Nancy mentioned, about, about a foot and a half below average natural grade. Parking is not visible, which is a nice thing in a neighborhood, and there are ample private outdoor spaces with decks and terraces, as well as some yard area. So this is a layout of the, the first level, and the lot coverage is about fifty-two percent. We're allowed sixty, so we're, we're doing pretty good in that regard for this structure. This is a floor plan of the apartment, and unit one, there was a question about, could that be made accessible? Our plan would be to make unit one fully accessible. It's eight hundred and ten square feet. Unit two is fourteen hundred and twenty-one square feet, and unit three is fifteen hundred and fifty square feet. Generally, these are pretty generous for apartments, but again, we need a variety of housing for different household types. Certainly, there are families who need apartments. So when we're looking at some of the parking exceptions, there's a provision in the ordinance under section seventeen point four-four point oh-two-oh, A three-one-E, where, where there's an overlay zone, lesser parking may be allowed if, if specified in an overlay zone, but in no case shall be less than two spaces for a residence of greater than one thousand square feet of living area. So there is a potential for your commission to consider that for the one unit that's eight hundred and ten square feet. And as Scott mentioned, for the garage setback, it, it normally is for when you have a driveway that's directly in front of a garage. You need, you need twenty feet of parking so the car parked there wouldn't overhang a sidewalk. So that is not relevant in this case, and would otherwise block access to the, the So one other thing I'd like to, to share with your commission, and that is that one parking space reduction is requested for the smaller-sized apartment because of easy non-vehicular access to a local market, which is just down the street, to schools, which are just a few hundred feet away, to recreation opportunities, both the park and to the ocean, and to employment, all via either transit, walking, or cycling. We are literally, well, I'll go into that in a moment, and to make up for one of the required spaces, I thought a possible option I wanted to share with your commission, which would be to allow an uncovered space within the street-side setback along Sequoia, and this would be screened from view, and we would use pavers that would, that would allow water to permeate, and we would screen that with screening vegetation so it wouldn't be visible from the street. It's, it's another consideration. In terms of general plan policy, that would support some flexibility. The housing element indicates that although the city does not see current development standards as a constraint to the development of housing, to ensure that multifamily projects are able to meet maximum densities and generally ensure that development standards do not constrain the development of multifamily housing, the city has included program H one-three, which states that the city will continue to allow flexibility in development standards such as height, parking, and setbacks for multifamily projects. And, and this is just a copy of that policy, and just focusing on the, the center portion of that, the city will continue to implement procedures with objective standards to promote flexibility in, in development standards for height, parking, and setbacks. So as was pointed out earlier, Morro Bay is in need of this housing typology for, this is right out of your housing element, showing on the left side, units that have two-to-four-unit apartments. Only seven percent of the housing stock as of two thousand and thirteen was that type of, that typology. That's pretty low compared to single-family detached. And of course, the purpose of R four zoning is to allow higher-density apartment projects where appropriate. We're also, as, as you know, we're all now dealing with state requirements to deal with more seriously with our RIN numbers, and I found an interesting statistic when I contacted the department a day or two ago. What Morro Bay has reported to the State Department of Finance for the years two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen for market-rate apartment buildings is zero. So we all know we need apartments, and so this is an opportunity to do something here with a little bit of flexibility. So Nancy asked me if I would look at consideration for a flat-roof concept, that what that might do to lower the height a bit, and I could, I could foresee us going from, we're at, we're at twenty-nine-six, and it, we could go down, we could go down two feet. We could be at twenty-seven-six with a flat-roof configuration, if that's the direction your commission would like to go. I prefer, personally, I prefer this because I just think that it fits in more with the character of the neighborhood. There are many benefits to this project. As I mentioned, Morro Bay needs apartments for all ranges of household sizes and incomes. The proposed apartment provides housing types that meet the general plan goals, housing element priorities, and regional housing needs allocation. The access to transit is a big benefit. Literally, within a hundred and fifty feet of this site is a fixed route transit state bus stop at Main and Sequoia, and this accesses all areas of Morro Bay. It's close to schools, three hundred feet from Delmar Elementary and, and its associated park, and, and transit and safe bicycle access to the high school. It's easy access to a food market, only seven hundred feet to Delmar Market. It's easy access to the beach via walking, bicycle, and transit, and it's easy access to employment locations via transit. So this is, if you will, a poster child for R four lot that could benefit from a parking reduction because of the easy access, walkability, transit, and so forth. So with that, our applicant requests your commission's approval of the concept plan. We will go further and fine-tune the design and work with staff on more building detail and articulation. And that concludes my remarks.
Good, great. Thank you very much. We'll probably be talking to you a little bit later here. Would anybody else from the public like to speak to this item? Please state your name.
Apparently, I'm short. My name is Mary Jo Rogers. I happen to live in the Little Yellow House on Birch, right across the field from this. I've been there twenty-one years, and I realize that, yes, someday someone's gonna buy this property, and yes, you know, what little tiny view I have will be gone, and that's not a big deal. That has nothing to do with why I am here. I am here because we have two sets of condos and one set of apartments on Sequoia Street, right across the street from me. And if possible, I would like to hand you some pictures. We have no street parking in the evenings and on weekends. During the day, yes, some of the people go to work, and it's gone, but it is unbelievably tight, and it's just gonna get worse. This project has too many apartments, you know, too much. They are, they are not done with anything but my iPhones, so they're not great, but that'll give you an idea. I've tried to take different angles. When I got the little postcard in the mail, I went, oh goodness. Okay, so I have a few objections. One is the height, which unless you guys agree to make it almost thirty feet high, apparently, according to your own website, it says the proposed project could not achieve the required density if that height is not allowed, and that's only, you know, one little, one little thing that's a problem with it. The parking, having one less because of the ADA van requirement, I think that the ADA van requirement is wonderful. I think we need more of those. I have two sons that are disabled, and let me tell you, this county does not have any apartments hardly available for people who are, who are disabled. It's really tough to find it, so I agree with that. However, I do not agree with two sub-compacts, two regular cars, and the van parking, because then you have less parking, which will be more street parking. I came home from a meeting one night, and the friend who drove me home said, my God, there's no place to park on this street. And I said, yep, you know. So we already have that problem. Having the one, two-bedroom is nice because there's only X amount of people that'll fit in that, but two, three-bedrooms, there could be a lot of people in that, even if they have small kids, which I know we need that kind of housing. Those kids grow up like they did across the street, and all those kids go to work, and we have more cars on the street. So the density is really not great for this neighborhood. We're already pretty dense. Yes, you have single-family and stuff, but across the street, you have a lot of multifamily projects. So that is one of the problems. Who is gonna make sure that the new tenants each have a sub-compact to put in that apartment? And they don't have big trucks that aren't gonna fit in the garage and that will also be out on the street. We have a lot of them. That's probably one reason why everybody else who has to have garages across the street, because that was required at the time they were built, they can't get them in there, so they're on the street. Anyway, I just wondered who was going to monitor this? We need affordable housing, but I would imagine this is not gonna be very affordable. It is gonna be two-story, ocean-view housing. So I can imagine that it will be, for the eight hundred square-foot place, it'll probably be about fifteen to seventeen hundred. For the three-bedroom places, oh my gosh, who knows, even higher. And I don't agree with the cutting five feet off of the setback for the building slash garage opening, because the garage opening is the edge of the building. So you wanna put it five feet closer to the road. Don't need that. Anyway, I know, because I printed it this afternoon, that the planning commission has several occasions expressed a desire to build several occasions as expressed a desire to build out projects to the density allowed by the zoning code. But this project, we need a parking exemption for the garage entrance, for the amount of cars in the garage per unit, and then the height also. So there's three things that I think would not fit in with the current neighborhood. Please, in conclusion, please stick to the current standards that you guys have. There is a vacant lot, the exact same size on the corner of San Jacinto and Alder, between Alder and Birch, and that project was two houses, and that was permitted because that's what your guys' standards are. This three unit is too big for our neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Bernie Melvin. I live at, my wife and I own a home at 2998 Elm Avenue, about four blocks above this proposed project. We've owned that home and lived there for 39 years. I can't see this lot from my home. It's not taking my view. My comments are based on my concerns with the density and the height. If we were to get in our Wayback machine, I've obviously been there a long time. When I bought my house in 1979, Sequoia Street from Main to Elm was a 12-foot wide dirt road. Delmar Elementary School was closed due to lack of enrollment. My oldest child never got to go to school there. There were no condos, no apartments. Fast forward, we've had a lot of development and a lot of changes in that neighborhood, and I've basically approved of all of that. I had the privilege of sitting on this planning commission for almost 10 years. So I voted to approve a lot of projects in that area, so I am not anti-development. I've also been a planner for the City of Los Angeles and a senior planner for San Luis Obispo County. I happen to work with our esteemed applicant's representative. A.J. Wright does good projects, and they work. I am concerned with the density and the height. If you were to pull out a copy of the North Main Street specific plan, my name is on there as one of the authors. The city council did something a little different with a specific plan in this area. They didn't hire a consultant. They used city officials, and I happen to be a representative for the planning commission on that. We had a lot of hearings, a lot of public notification, a lot of people came to our meetings. One of the big things they were concerned about was height and density. If you were to do a land use survey of that area, if you go south and east, it's completely single family with a few bootleg duplexes and garage apartments. I'm not against inappropriate development, but I think this is forced. I'm concerned with the parking, the setback, and the height. In my opinion, there is not significant public benefit to approve this project as proposed. If you were going to approve this project as it sits, I feel that the required public benefit would require affordable housing, basically deed restricted, and I think that's something for you folks to talk about. Okay, so I'd like to see reduced the density. I'd adhere to the 25-foot height limit. In my time on the planning commission, I heard a lot of testimony about community character, and that's what I'm talking about here. Thank you for your consideration.
Good, thank you.
My name is Anita Ayub. I live at 2988 Birch Avenue, right by where the site is going to be built. I have no objection for any building to go on there, but this project is not compatible for our area. And Mary Jo has said just about everything I was going to say about the parking, because I have the same problem. People come over to my house and say, we were going to drop by, but guess what? You had company already. And I'm looking like, what? Because there's cars out in front of my house, just they are at Mary Jo's. We have a school there, yes, and we have a low housing area where a lot of people go to work, and like Mary Jo said, the pickups are parked right in front of our houses because there's no parking. I do believe this homes, the apartments that they're going to build, do have parking areas. But like it is, if you have a big pickup, you can't park in that. I hope you do not consider about building this monster. It's what, 29 going now on 30? Uh-uh, too high. I hope you don't approve of this conception. And by the way, there is a siren, a big tall, nobody even noticed it when they put it on there. That will not ever be removed, and when that goes off, believe me, even my house shakes. Thank you very much, and I hope this project does not go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Linda Merrill, and my husband and I wrote you all emails. Did you receive them?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. My neighbors have made a wonderful case against this project as the concept that's come before us. I'm really sorry that we are somehow guinea pigs for the city to say, oh, well, we're going to just throw this out there and see how it's accepted, see what the neighbors think about it. This has got us really upset, folks. You know, I mean, we, this is a quality of life issue for us. You guys think, oh, well, multifamily, we don't count. You know, you look down from your mansions up on the hill, and you think, oh, those people down there in those condos, they don't really care about their neighborhood. But, you know, we do. My neighbors, I know my neighbors here, I've known them for 30 years, you know, and we care about each other, and we care about our quality of life. And this is, if you all approve this kind of concept for neighborhoods, nobody else has a three story. You know, why is this owner able to violate all of these rules? We live by the rules. We all live by rules. How come somebody can come and just say, I'm not going to adhere to that rule, and this rule doesn't count, and, oh, well, we'll just mess up that rule? So, you know, folks, this is really serious for us, and we're really upset. I mean, we don't come to these meetings very much, or maybe at all. Some people have never been to these kinds of meetings. But we're out tonight, and we're asking you to look at this thing seriously. You know, this is not a good fit for our neighborhood. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Okay, this is a little, you know, this isn't a motion item, so. Do we have questions for the applicant? Who wants to start?
I have a question for Mr. Stevenson. It seems like a pretty plain reading of the exception, the height exception, is that you can build a structure to 25 feet, and if you need some additional footage in order to vary that roof structure, you will get some additional footage. Is that a fair interpretation? Would you agree?
I think generally it is a fair description. There is some wiggle room for your commission in terms of how you interpret a recessed garage. You know, we have recessed it a bit. We could recess it a few inches more to get it down, in order to get height down. So we can, we're, I think that the language in the ordinance is, gives you some room.
Could you not break 27 feet?
I believe so. Yeah.
With the flat roof and a slight recess of the, an additional recess?
So just looking at this graphic, what I've tried to show here was, we're at 29.6. If we did flat roof, we could reduce it down to 27, and I could reduce the subgrade another six inches to get to 27. So, yes.
Okay, Michael?
Did you take a look at actually trying to get four units on there with garages instead of three with a combined garage like this? Because you have three, you have three street orientations.
Yeah, right.
It would seem to me that you've got three really open views, and the concern I have is that the singular garage kills the, I appreciate what you say, you can't see the cars, but it kills the first level in terms of it feeling like a neighborhood building. It makes it feel more like a commercial building that might be better a block away.
Well, can I just, I don't think I can get to four. I think I can get to, maybe Nancy or?
Not the square footages.
Well, there's a density issue. It's just numbers of units regardless of that, too. That's a factor.
The great thing about a garage and that 20-foot space is, then your large truck does fit in at least your own space in front of your garage door. And, you know, I'm a little concerned about the need for the people who don't have a vehicle that's going to work in there to start parking. And then if you've got an older child living, a child in one of those places that drives, and you've got two, three cars per unit, I don't know. But that's my main question. Did you look at the townhouse kind of typology with either three or four townhouses?
I looked at, there were, there were two or three different design options that I worked with. One was to have a garage accessing off Birch, and then another one off of Alder, and to try to work that situation. I didn't get to four units, and really, it started taking up too much ground area to have any living space on the ground floor. It was becoming very, this was the, this was the option I saw. And frankly, if we think about R4 density, just generally speaking, to achieve those densities, we really need podium parking. We need height, and we need, we need, we need those kinds of considerations when we're doing high density housing. And this is, I would, I would argue that this is not high density. I mean, even your R4 zoning at 27 units per acre is not high density. So we're just trying to work with the standard what we have, but recognizing that higher density, in a lot of cases, is going to require a little flexibility as your, as your ordinance and your housing element indicate.
I'm not opposed to flexibility, but I think you have to see the, you have to see the outcomes in the nature of the design. I mean, and again, are we doing comments as well?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. We're a little more informal right now.
I would just say to me that it looks like a large building instead of three residences, and that's going to work against it. It works against it at the street level because of the garage. It works against it in that you really don't identify the unit entrance to the individual dwellings, and you end up with this kind of low sloped roof profile that I think is absolutely deadly in terms of a, something that works with this neighborhood, because it just elongates the building. And we would not ever look at this as being compatible with our neighborhood design standards based on the massing that it has. I think it's, we had something in here a few weeks ago that we looked at that I thought was, it was, it was two houses with two grannies, two secondary dwellings, and that had a scale aspect to it that I thought was spectacular, that they wanted too much height. And this strikes me as going the different direction. It strikes me as an extraordinarily large building, and I think that's always going to end up being the biggest problem here, is even with that north elevation setback that your third level doesn't start until you're farther down south in the block, I think that it's a, I think that's the way I'm reading it, right? The two-story part is to the north?
Yes.
Yeah. I think that's the, that's the side that.
This elevation.
Yeah, I think that's the side that, I'm actually kind of surprised about that, because I would have thought that to get the three units to have a piece of a view, you'd want the view side to be the north side looking out to the northwest. So if you're looking at this way, eventually, the commercial on the Main Street probably is going to be high enough to block all the views of whatever this is. Just a guess. I guess my other, my other concern is that that third story ends up having the ridge line go the north-south direction, which means it's, you really get very little ability to see through that top highest mass, and I think that may be, may be an issue.
I always like to listen to you first, because you do bring up, you know, I had a sense, for me, it was the massing part of it, but the way you described it, that's what I kind of felt. And then I think that what you mentioned with the ridge, that north-south as well, that contributes to the, for me, anyway, the massing of the building. And I think that the, the issue of height, you could probably address that with, I think what Jesse was saying earlier, but the, yeah, it's, for me, it's the massing. It's a neighborhood compatibility and the massing of it.
On that third floor, what's the plate level height? I couldn't, I was having trouble making that up.
Plate height on the top floor, I believe, is eight feet.
No, I mean, I saw it was eight feet, but from average natural grade, what is that before the roof starts? So.
Well, I'm not, not exactly, are you talking about from out here, or?
From, so your third floor plate height, your, your top plate?
Uh-huh, yes.
Okay. What is that above average natural grade?
From this point above an average natural?
Yeah.
I, well, just sort of doing the math, I'd say it's about three feet lower, so maybe 20, 24?
24 feet? Okay. To me, it's important, that's important, it's an important figure, and I didn't see that on, you know, on the plans, and I also didn't see a, you know, a site plan developed enough. I know we're early in the process to see how, how the building could get pushed around on the side a little bit, but I think we're pretty tight on all of our boundaries. So the way I read the, you know, the ordinance is that the, the extra height is allowed for varied roofline articulation and development. And so I'd really like to see from staff, too, as if we could, do we have a hard reading on what that, that the ordinance says?
It does speak to the roofline. I think, I think the policy gives discretion to the planning commission to make some decisions. I think it's pretty clear the city's housing element directs us to encourage multifamily housing. Again, I, my sort of preamble before we started the discussion was, was sort of along those lines, was that if we wanted, our ordinance isn't kind to this type of housing, right? I mean, we're running in the province of it because it doesn't really accommodate it very well, but there are provisions in our code that speak to it, and speak to us, you know, providing some flexibility there. So that's kind of, I mean, so there are exceptions, and there are parking exceptions, you know, and there's the, hey, we need the planning commission to make the decision that we can go to 30 feet or above 25. go to 30 feet or above 25. Those provisions are written into the code, and they're, and the use of those provisions are encouraged by our housing element realizing that our codes aren't kind to multifamily development. And so, again, that's sort of why we're here having the conversation. So it depends on whether you want to take that discretion or not. I can't speak to how it's been used in the past. We have 30-foot buildings down there, a few, and they are standalone units, or there's two units, you know, on one lot, I think is what we have, a couple of those. Not sure what the findings were on those, or what the reasoning behind the approval was. Unclear. You could do some research if you want us to come back to you on that.
There was those four buildings on Birch Street that, that got developed. They were supposed to be developed as town, as individual houses, and they were developed as townhouses, and they had some, you know, deck, deck railings that were solid that went up over 30 feet, or 230 feet, if I remember correctly. And so we have these popping up in different, different areas down there. And it's, in ways, you know, what I'm having trouble with is there's a mishmash of application. And I'm, I'm having trouble making a consistent, you know, the logic of a consistent ruling for this project, for Stollmeyer's project, for, for the one that's going to be next door that's going to come through, that house is for sale, you know, so, you know?
And we're fixing those, I mean, so, we recognize that from the staff level. These are not fantastic, and they, and they have the sort of unintended consequence, I think back from when they were written, that it makes it hard for these types of things to fit in, whereas, this is the zoning we placed on here, so we expect you to have something that's more dense.
Right.
But, but then we know trying to make it work is, is, is difficult with, with the parameters. So we have addressed some of this in the code update. You haven't seen it yet, but I mean, we, we are cognizant of that, and we're trying to remove barriers. So that's kind of what this is about. Does it fit nicely into the way this is written? No, it doesn't. And, I mean, it really, this policy really doesn't speak to fitting in residential density. It speaks to architectural and articulation, pitched roofs versus flat roofs. That's what it speaks to.
Yeah. Do, you know, one of the, I think, density bonuses are one of the considerations that could help us along is to have a deed restricted. You know, have that one unit that would be, you know, handicapped accessible, or universal design, or however you want to say that, to have that deed restricted, seeing as you have a handicap parking space required, would your client be amenable to that?
I could talk to them about that. I mean, certainly, we will make it fully accessible, handicap accessible, the number-one unit. That was, that was in the plan. To put a deed restriction on it, in terms of fixing a rent over a period of time, could be difficult to get a loan from a bank. If there, and I'm not sure we could achieve a bonus. We're not, there's not enough of that to achieve any density benefit. So I, I think what we, what we could do is certainly make it accessible.
Okay. Yeah, but if it's accessible and it's rented at market rate to first come, first served, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to, it's going to solve a community problem that we can...
We certainly, we certainly would make an effort to make it available first to people with a disability. That would be our commitment to doing that, absolutely. And we'd make it available for a period of time, maybe six months, make that available to persons with a disability that would need that kind of housing, that's, that's part of our, our plan. We certainly can work with the heights. I mean, I'm happy to play with roof configuration, get it down a couple more feet, if you, if that's some direction your commission would see happening. And I'm also curious if, to get a reaction on the idea of that site plan. I know it's not consistent with your ordinance to have an uncovered space. But if we're talking about making flexibility, making things work to get that space, and I can make it attractive and make it, and conceal it with attractive landscaping feature and pavers, that would take away one of the issues.
If I may, I had a thought on that. So, I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to reduce the amount of vehicles. We're trying to encourage transit. We're trying to encourage bicycles. What about bike lockers? Or maybe some, some long-term bike parking that makes it, you know, you know, someone with a, with a really nice $2,000 bike doesn't want to drag it up to three, the third floor, they can park it downstairs and lock it up. That seems like something...
There is storage.
That, that is something we were going to provide anyway, but we do have room right along the stairway for, you know, a narrow bike locker. They'll be happy to do that. I was thinking of a motorcycle spot, bike lockers for sure. We do have storage showing here, private storage.
And the other thing as far as apartment, too, is, you know, to have the availability for the, the owners to, to have EV charging, you know, Level 2 charging.
I agree.
So, you know, I think that would be a condition I'd want to see on this.
We would, we would accept that for sure. That's a good idea.
Yeah. So...
I had a couple more thoughts, if I may.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I was asking questions. I didn't get a chance to kind of sway in how I felt about this. So I, I really like it, except for the height. I'm more than willing to, to consider that exemption for the parking, given that you have an ADA accessible, accessible parking requirement that kind of eliminates one spot for you. I would be willing to, to consider the reduction in front yard setback. However, I think that a two-foot over the limit is about as, as high as I would be willing to even consider, given the, the way the community feels about this. I do love the idea of an accessible unit, and to further that notion, I was wondering if maybe you would be willing to partner with a, with a, some sort of a local, I won't say nonprofit, but some sort of a local agency that maybe is looking, is, places disabled folks in?
Sure, absolutely.
Maybe get, maybe get some sort of list from them, and, you know, I mean, market, market rate, you know, not asking you to give it away, but just work with, work with those types of agencies to maybe place...
Yes, absolutely. Veterans, local veterans, facilities, things like that, or others, sure, absolutely.
Yeah, the Eagles is close.
Right. That's right. Now, that's a great idea.
Have you, have you looked into also doing a little more articulation on the, on the facade?
Yes.
That's one of the, one of the issues is that it reads as a solid mass.
Right. We, and we sort of, we sort of tapped the brakes a bit when we ran into some issues. I didn't want to spend more of my client's money on more design if it wasn't going to end up. Definitely have more ideas for the lower-floor spaces where the, there's some, you know, some building masses and articulation that's needed down in here, some openings and some fenestration, and make it look more interesting, varied materials. We can do that to help reduce scale and massing.
Okay, and then, you know, Commissioner Lucas mentioned the, instead of the north-south ridge line, the east-west ridge line, you know, as far as a, you know, that would, would give you a little bit more, you know, airspace for the neighborhoods behind you, you know, there...
Sure, we could look at that. So just change the direction of the north of this ridge?
Right.
To go the other direction?
Correct. Okay.
But I think, I just wanted to, though, be, if we're, if we are reducing height, then I'm, I'm...
You're probably going to a flat roof. Yeah. Yeah.
But I will, I will articulate that with a nice facade that's articulated and attractive and use of color.
Yeah, the blockhouse mentality can, you know, it definitely is a detriment to, to what you're trying to achieve here. So go ahead.
Yeah, my thoughts. Given that there, these are two, three bedrooms and one two-bedroom, sometime over time, more cars will be associated with that. So I think on its face, the parking arrangements for something of this size are just inadequate. But, but more importantly is the sensitivity to this height limitation. And I think if I read the community properly, there has to be an unassailable good reason to go over 25 feet, and by good reason, I mean good reason for the community. Okay, so we have this exception that essentially, as I, as I believe, and as I got the appropriate response, was you can build to 25 feet, and if you want to do a more interesting roof treatment, we will allow you to go a little bit higher. But as the current application is in, there's nothing to suggest that the height is required by a more interesting roof design. It's required to create a third story, which is, I believe, not really what that exception was intended, was intended to do. Now, there's a community good in providing affordable housing, but I would caution, it's, there's a good in providing rental housing, but what we really want to achieve is affordable rental housing. And this exception, this, this application on its face, to my way of thinking, does not provide affordable rental housing. In addition, it's in a community which is largely two-stories apartments and single-family, so it's not terribly approachable for that reason. And finally, the height restriction is here, the 25-foot restriction is here, to preserve the wonderful small-town feeling of Morro Bay, but also indirectly to provide some kind of equity in terms of view sharing. I realize that no one has a property right to a view, but nevertheless, we're trying to keep the height down so that people have some ask, ability to see the ocean and the like. And that's not achieved here by, by raising it. So I, I am opposed to this for the simple reason that I don't see sufficient community good in it. I really don't.
Okay, I guess we're at comments now. So, go ahead.
One more, yeah. You know, Joe, you brought up a lot of good points, and I was wondering if, you know, we're talking about affordable housing, right? Or, you know, or rent, I mean, that's not affordable, but let's say it's more density, and we want to make it for more, for community good. And I don't necessarily know if I agree with this or not, but I mean, if you had more units, smaller units, okay, in a space, then there'd be, there's more room, you know, but when you have three bedrooms, you know, more room for maybe, you know, accepting varieties, but when you have three-bedroom apartments, and two of them, and that's kind of...
I mean, we, we lack rental housing, period. Affordable's fantastic, but we lack rental housing, period. Try to go rent someplace in town right now. I mean, good luck.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's tough, and usually there's, you know, there's a line in that thing, and whatever's for rent goes like that. It's been the experience with folks trying to rent, you know, with folks that work for me, trying to rent housing and not being able to find it. It's, it's a tough housing market. These, I thought, I thought this project was unique from the standpoint that it did provide three-bedroom units that would allow a family to rent them. You know, we don't, we don't have much of that. And Nancy showed you the last multifamily housing project that we developed, that was 2014. And it was a smaller project, a very well-done project. I liked that, I liked that project a lot. It was, it was really thoughtfully laid out. This is the maximum number of units you can get on this lot based on the density that applies to the zone. So it's three. You can get three. Could they have smaller units? Sure, they could, they could have two two-bedroom units and a one-bedroom unit. It's just, these are all things, housing for families is something that we need in town. I mean, we don't have it. And, I mean, I would, I would argue that, I mean, not argue, I mean, the legislature's telling you this, too. It's not just, that's just me. We have a housing crisis. We're grossly short on housing. And so is, is this ideal? Well, no, because it doesn't comply with all of our requirements, but do our requirements really fit this type of housing? I would argue that they don't.
I guess the thing that I'm most sympathetic to is this idea of the parking problems, because we, you know, I'm impacted by a rental unit next to us that, you know, periodically there's five, six cars that show up to that house that's rented. And my concern is that if you, if you have a garage, you've got a, you've got a definitive number of spaces. If I've got a garage with a driveway, I always have the driveway. We're on record as having approved small units in special situations with tandem parking. You know, so if I can get three cars per unit with three townhouse-type things with tandem parking, I think that's superior to having a garage underneath that kills the lower level in terms of human presence. And I think that you can do things with the grade, you can do things with the code, I think, says kitchens and bathrooms only need to have seven-foot clearance. You can do lofts above those things to get extra bedroom space or something like that. I think there's all sorts of ways to compress the height down without making it seem this large. That's just an opinion.
Okay, let's wrap this up.
I meant to bring this up. I actually live on the corner of Monterey and Pacific, where that last project went in. And it's all apartments, right? There's all high-density, and, you know, parking is a problem. You know, where I live, parking is a problem. You know, if I, I have two spots, but, you know, if my mom comes to visit, she's parking a block and a half away, and I have to, she parks and I have to go park her car for her. You know, that's just, that's just kind of the nature of the beast. And, and, you know, I mean, I need somewhere to live, so I took it. And people need places to live, so...
Yeah. Joseph, do you have anything else?
Okay. Richard, just, again, but just to, just to reiterate, we have, we have an opportunity here to achieve some kind of affordable housing on that unit, and perhaps what we need to alter is, is the, is the density, which would then provide an unassailable good reason to allow a little bit more height, so that perhaps we, we can accommodate four units of two and one bedrooms, which brings the rental price down and makes it available to more. I'm sympathetic that there is, I'm sympathetic that there's clearly a lack of any kind of rental space, okay? And now I say to myself, well, we're going to try and cure it. Let's try and cure it with affordable rental space. That's all.
Okay, I'm sure you're looking for some clear direction.
I would just like to comment on this, on the term affordable, because this is something as planners, we, you know, it, it doesn't mean anything unless, unless it's deed restricted.
No, 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 no.
I apologize for everything. I simply mean market rates. Smaller-sized habitats, which then are, require a lower rent level because of a lower square footage market rates, that's all.
Okay. I, I guess it's my turn now? Okay. One of the major, you know, in our planners' college that we went to, or their, our seminar, there was mention, there's like 5,000-plus bills coming before the state assembly and state house, Congress, all dealing with affordable housing, you know? We're, unless we start building them, they're going to be shoved down our throat.
That's right.
And these are going to be done by right. And we will have no say on them at all. And so...
That's right.
We haven't approved, we haven't approved, you know, multifamily housing here very, you know, very well. As far as the, making all of the, you know, all of the new multifamily housing, you know, studios, we need a variety of, of housing stock. You need, you need two-bedroom, two-bedroom apartments for somebody that's got two kids. You know, for a family that's got two kids, that's starting a, you know, maybe doing a startup or working for Amazon or something, you know? So we need the variety. And so just pushing everything into studio and one-bedrooms, you know, that's not going to solve our housing problem here. The problem we have here with this site is it's adjacent to a residential neighborhood, and we're only allowing 25 feet with, with exceptions, and you can't fit three stories on, in 25 feet. You just, you can squeeze and, you know, but you just can't. It's, so, I'm not sure where we go with this as far as, in the, in the, in the LCP update, unless we deal with that height restriction at 25 to take it up...
We're dealing with it.
Yeah, to take it up to 30 feet, we're not going to get, we're not going to get multifamily homes.
Is this a geologic area that the geotechnics are going down three feet?
Well, the problem is you've got 15 feet to go down that three feet in, so at a six... 6% grade on that driveway, you're only dealing with a .9 foot, you know, in detention. So at a 14% grade for that driveway, you're going from zero to 14 to zero, you're getting maybe a foot and a half at the most. So over that course of distance, you know, unless you got that truck that sits 30 inches high off the ground, you're not going, you're not going to clear the brake on the pavement. So that's, that's the restriction on these for burying that three feet down is what, which ideally is what, you know, should be done. But I don't see how you get that with a driveway, especially a 15-foot or even a 20-foot driveway.
That's why I said, I can go down a little bit, but not much.
Yeah. So that was my reading on it. So as far as clear direction, I'm not sure, you know, we're supposed to offer it, and I think we're, you know.
Let's take it bite by bite.
Okay.
So, the parking.
I'm, I'll, I'll start off with that. I'm happy with the adjacent outdoor space, seeing as one of the units, we could justify that, as one of the units is a, is a one-bedroom unit under 1,000 square feet. We allow a single-covered parking spot for single-family homes with under 1,000 square feet with one, one-covered parking. So having the, the parking, but, you know, in the setback, you know, we've approved that on other, other lots, so I, I could go with that. So anybody else want to?
I agree. I, I would, I'd be in favor of approving the parking exception.
Joseph?
Some of these parking spaces are for sub-compacts, I believe?
They're very compact spaces. Some are more compact, yeah.
I, I, I think we have to come up with a better solution. I, I, I don't think it's adequate. I, I don't like it, no.
Good.
Michael? I'm, I'm open to seeing more spaces somehow appear on the site. I don't know if that's the right place to have them. To me, that's the front of the building, because that's the way everybody's going to be proceeding from Main Street to get there. And, and that's my biggest concern is, is its appearance from the north, I think, is, is especially problematic right now.
Richard, parking?
Yeah, I, I'm not a, I'm not a big fan of compact parking, because, but on-site option, take a look.
On-site option, take a look for the parking. Sorry about that, yeah.
May I clarify, just went on the parking, two are full-size 10-wide, two are nine-feet, and one is eight, eight-wide. So they're not all.
Okay. Okay, so, so I think Commissioner Lucas had the most to say related to the architectural, architecture of the building. I'd like a little more input. I think Commissioner Lucas articulated well what his concerns were. Do the rest of the commission share the similar concerns? One, you know, I mean, it looks like potentially if we're going to push it down, I guess, let's back up one. So are we, are we good if we're able to make it at 27 feet?
That's as high as I can approve.
Joseph?
No, no, because I think that's a misreading of the exception. I think the exception is designed to have a structure at 25 feet, and we will allow for, for a more attractive or interesting roof. And I, and as, as currently conceived, I don't believe that that's the purpose of the request for the exception, exception. So it's, if I, it's possible that I could see a redesigned project in which, yes, it was designed, and I could honestly say that we are granting the extra two feet in order to have a more varied roof structure. But I, I don't see it in the application now.
Well, certainly, Commissioner Granger brings up a very good point. We'll provide findings along those lines as well for you.
Okay.
Mike? Yeah, I actually agree with, with Joe on that one. I, I think it depends, not, not on this project, not in this.
I took that away from previous comments.
Exactly the same thing. I, I, for me, it's the massing part of it, okay?
That's good.
Yeah, I'm, I couldn't go with the way the project's laid out right now. But if it came with a, a much stronger project with more community good to it, then I could, I could be convinced, you know. But I'm not, this project is just too blocky, and ridgeline runs the wrong way. I don't think it, it could address the issues better. But I'm, you know, I'm still caught in that if we're trying to get multifamily, you know, the 20, the 25-foot height limitation is almost a dead stop for it. You're almost, you're locked into a townhouse arrangement with garage, you know, garage on the ground floor and living up, up above, and you're, you're dealing with maybe, you know, just a single level with maybe a loft. So, you know, if you can come up with some other magical arrangements.
I, I appreciate all your comments, in particular, Commissioner Lucas. I, I agree. And as I mentioned earlier, we sort of, we sort of held back on moving ahead with more articulation because.
Right.
We need to come here to get some direction. But I hear what you're saying. We'll, we'll look at the exterior elevations to give them a more human presence on the street, the lower level, more, more window fenestration, more articulation in some fashion. Go to a flat roof concept and, and go to 27 feet. And, yeah, I think we can accomplish what your, your ideas are.
Okay.
I, I want to clarify what I was saying was, I mean, I was kind of being very direct. I, I will not support anything in excess of 27. So, I mean, I, I don't necessarily love the way it's designed either.
Mm-hmm.
And I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Anything above 27, I don't think I would support in any fashion, so.
Roger that.
That's really what I was trying to say, so.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay.
Something, you gave great guidance. I mean, clearly they could go design a project that has two units on it and come through here and be done with it. But if they can work through the, the issues that were raised here and that we talked about this evening and try to get three, I mean, that's, that's, that's the hope. If it can't be done, then it can't be done. But I appreciate the input. Thank you.
And it may be better to wait for the, see what the LCP, what the new regulations are, you know. So.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And we'll, we'll move on from this. Hopefully you got the, you got the guidance you were looking for?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, I want to, I want to thank the public for coming out on this also. Okay, we're going to, we're going to back, back step a little bit to go back to planning commissioner announcements. Okay, seeing none, we have no presentations. We've got a consent calendar. Item A1 is the current and advanced processing list. We, at this point, we need to receive and file. I don't think there's any action required on that.
You don't have to do anything like that.
Yeah. We got through B1 and B2. New business, none. Unfinished business, none. Once again, planners, planning commissioner comments. We've already gone through that. Community developer, development director comments.
I do have a question for you. I was looking at calendars moving forward because we have a, a lot of, a lot of items making their way through the, the process. And so we're going to be seeing some heavy agendas coming forward. You know, one of them's going to be Panorama in June. You may have an, you may have an agenda moving, coming up here pretty quickly that has maybe even four or five items on it, depending. And we're slating in review of the general plan, LCP and zoning code into those. You'll be seeing modules of two, the height issue on module two coming back to you, and then module three on the 15th of May. So the next meeting. And, and I looked beyond, because it's off the dry erase board calendar on my wall, and I looked at what happens in July, and our meeting's on the 3rd. Oh, so, so I'm, so I'm asking whether I'm going to have a quorum and whether I, I dare schedule items for that meeting, or whether, I, I'm not going to, I'm definitely not going to put anything that's very controversial on that. It's going to be, if anything on that, I think is going to be straightforward, because I, I don't think it, you know, at least from what I can tell, it'll be straightforward. Nothing too, too complicated for that, just because it's not, I mean, because you probably have a lot of folks that aren't in town as well. And so I don't want to have things that are too, you know, too controversial. But my question to you is, you don't have to tell me now, but if you're starting to think about, hey, time I'm taking off, and yep, I'm not going to be here, start letting me know, so I don't load that agenda. You know, and we could, you know, cancel that meeting or whatever. You can take time off if you want, but.
Okay, well, I'll be here.
Well, as a reminder, I mailed you a couple of months ago. I have a scheduling conflict for the next meeting.
Yeah, I, I have that.
So, I mean, as long as you have a quorum.
Yes, we're good. Make sure.
Okay.
I think I previously said I was going to be gone in June, but I'm, I'm going to be here. But I'll be gone, I may be gone that 4th of July, the next meeting I may miss. I haven't mailed that down yet. But I think I'm here on the 3rd.
Okay, all right. Well, it sounds like, you know, we're probably going to have a quorum then. So I just wanted to check, because.
Yeah.
For sure you're like, no, not in town.
I'm, I'm going to be gone three weeks in September.
Okay.
So, that's.
We should be done with you on all the general plan stuff by then, what's supposed to be, anyway. We'll see.
Can you, can you email us the link for the next module, you know, on the LCP? I haven't been able to find it on the website.
Well, we, we literally, well, we'll be, we'll be releasing that at the end of this week.
Okay.
For you, I believe. We just, we just got module three back, and we, and we don't have the stuff back on two, so I might give you that a little bit ahead of time. And then two might come later. But we're trying to get it, you know, enough times, you have a little bit of time to review it. Prior to the weekend, see if two weekends to review for the next meeting. I am, we're cognizant of that, and we're working our way through that.
Okay, great.
I think at the planning commissioner conference, there was one community that was saying they had their things two weeks in advance before the meetings, and they didn't understand why anybody couldn't do that.
Okay, well, we, well, I, just a little, you know, a little discussion here, just a minute before we go. You know, I tried to push public, you know, comment, public interaction further forward in the agenda. I don't know how that worked out, you know, or what's your guys' thoughts on that, or how we want to set up the agenda so that.
I actually need to go look to make sure that that's not a, a requirement, that you do them in that order. You have the, you have the flexibility to move things around, but to set a fixed agenda, I, maybe I'll put that on the next agenda item for discussion, so I can go do the research. And you don't need to talk about it right now. We'll just put it on there for discussion items. I'll have answers for you.
Okay.
As opposed to you coming up with an idea, and then I come back next week and say, no, sorry, you can't do that.
Okay, if there's, if there's a better solution, you know, I'm willing to try it, you know, just.
We just, here, in more way, we seem to have a practice of locking everything down. And I can see us having a resolution that sets the format of this.
Yeah.
Or it's in the council guidelines, or it's in the planning commissioner guidelines or those things. I just need to go look. I, I'm not sure if that exists or not.
Sometimes we get, we get kind of issues that because we don't have things published till Thursday, it may take a day till somebody even knows some things there. And then we get a, like today, we had quite a bit of correspondence come through. And so you get people showing up. But I think if you move the agenda, and then people show up at the wrong time, you know, so I think we're, I'd just be very cautious about it. I appreciate, though, having it up front when we know we're having people want to speak, because nobody wants to be here at 10:30 or 11:00 or 12:00.
Well, and I think, you know, one of the issues sort of came out last time. And I think maybe when we jump into the agenda, if we have items that are like that, that people think are being heard in the full, for a full item, but they're not, or we're continuing them, that we note, we'll just make an announcement in front of the meeting so people aren't waiting.
Yeah.
Because I, I agree, I didn't, that was not, that was not great.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that's an easy thing to resolve. But if we know we're going to have, we know we're continuing an item, we just announce that at the front, just in case anybody didn't get the message. And before, that's probably the best way to address that.
So Scott, could we try, I mean, you know, do we need speaker cards or a speaker list or something, just, just so we know?
It's not a product requirement.
No, it's not. But what I'm, no, what I'm saying is that people could, could, could state that they're here for this item, or this item, or this item.
We, we couldn't do that. I mean, I think the issue that we ran into, though, was simply the fact that that person, that they waited.
Correct.
Until the end, and they didn't know. We could have easily resolved that by just saying, oh, and by the way, you know, that item on the agenda is going to be continued. We could have just said that upfront. We would have still gone through the process and opened, and we could tell them, and if you want a way to provide comment, we'll take public comment when we open that item, but we're not going to hear it tonight. You know, I think that'd probably be sufficient. And I won't forget to do that, so I mean, I, I don't think it's a problem. You know, if we had that come, come forward, we'll let everybody know, and that'll stop that from happening.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
Okay, one last thing. I just want to make, say this for the record, lateral access right there by Verge's Landing, it's been outstanding.
Great. Okay, so we'll adjourn to the next regularly plans, Planning Commission meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building, 209 Surf Street, on May 15th, 2018, at 6:00 PM. So thank you, everybody.